Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, April the 11th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Baker, Galloway, Lennon, Piana, Mayor Coulter.
I'm here, thank you. We have a quorum. First order of business would be the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Otherwise, I believe a motion would be in order.
I would move that we adopt the agenda as printed.
Moved by Galloway, supported by Baker. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Baker, Galloway, Lennon, Piana, Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That passes. Our next order of business is a number of presentations this afternoon, this evening. The first one from the Ferndale Public Schools. Hi, good evening.
My name is Jessica Stillger, Communication Specialist for Ferndale Public Schools. I have a few items to share. The first is the results from the Ferndale Education Foundation big fundraiser earlier this month. The numbers came in at about $15,500 profit. So, we'd like to thank everyone who attended, donated, bought raffle tickets, live and silent auction items. It was a wonderful event, and we could not give back to the schools without the support of the community. So, on behalf of the foundation, we'd like to thank everyone. The girls' robotics team at University High School has recently won their regional competition for Robofest with their robot Robitar, which is a robotic working guitar. They are moving on to states next week, and we wish them luck. The Ferndale Schools, in the fall, will be offering a new tuition-based preschool program, and we are starting registration now. So, we'd like the community to know that we will have a three-year-old class and a four-year-old class. Three-year-olds will meet Tuesday and Thursday. Four-year-olds will have class on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. There are morning classes for two and a half hours, and this is new. We have our Grant Early Childhood Center, which is preschool programs for, that are state and federally funded, and this new program called the Little Eagle Preschool will be tuition-based. And our, more information about the actual tuition and the cost will be on our homepage, We'd like to remind everyone that we send out weekly newsletters that look like this, and if you are interested in signing up for the newsletters, to email FPSfanout@ferndalschools.org, where you can like us on Facebook and get the links there as well.
Excellent. Thanks so much. Our next presentation is a resolution honoring the Ferndale Area Chamber of Commerce's 75th anniversary. We talked about this at our last meeting, but I think it was Frank Flores who suggested that council ought to do an official recognition and resolution in support of our chamber. And so, that's exactly what we've done. I'm going to read part of it. I won't do all of it, but I'll read part of it for you, because I think it's important to know the impressive history of our chamber. And then, I know Jennifer from the chamber is here. I'll present this resolution to her. But on May the 9th, 1916, I don't know if any residents were around back then, but a small group of residents and business people met in the basement of Ferndale's Central School, and they were known as the Ferndale Boosters, and they worked on a proposed charter for a future Village of Ferndale, when it would be incorporated in 1918. Once the village was established, the organization changed its name to the Board of Commerce. And one of their many projects, it included the establishment of zoning in the village. So, they were very instrumental in the history of our community. The Rotary and Exchange Clubs formed in 1924, and the groups took over many of the duties formerly handled by the Board of Commerce. The Board faded away as the Great Depression took hold. But in 1936, as the economy revived and new businesses emerged, the Board of Commerce reformed as an entirely new organization. In 1942, Harvey Jacobs, owner and publisher of the Ferndale Gazette, was appointed as the Board's first full-time executive secretary. During World War II, the Board was instrumental in shaping Ferndale's industrial efforts to help win the war. The Board of Commerce officially changed its name in 1965 to the Ferndale Chamber of Commerce, and in February of 2010, the name was changed again to the Ferndale Area Chamber of Commerce, and a new logo debuted at that time. We have a very dynamic, active, and successful chamber. They're an important part of the success of our city. We're very proud of their 75 years, and we wish them another 75 years of success. So, Jennifer, if you would accept this resolution on behalf of the city? I'm going to ask Mike Lennon to present that.
Yes, I will. John Weir Jr. does not make it today. However, I told him I would read it in case some other family members are watching. John P. Weir, 82, a former resident of Ferndale, died March 25th, 2011, in Waterford. He was born October 25th, 1928, in Port Glenon, Northern Ireland, to Patrick Mary. He came to the United States when he was 19, settled briefly in New York. He moved to Michigan in search of work. Mr. Weir intended to return to Ireland a few years, but married and stayed, and started a family with Wandas, and instead became a United States citizen. Three of his sisters and a brother immigrated as well, settling in Philly, Toronto, and Ontario, Canada. Mr. Weir worked as a machinist for a tool and die company. He settled in Ferndale in the late 40s and lived here until 2005, when he moved to Waterford to be closer to his family. Mr. Weir was an active member of St. James Parish and was an honorary member of the American Legion. Being a social person, he was also a member of the Catapult Club, and remained active until that club recently. John P. Weir will be missed by many, but especially his children, John Jr., Michael, Jean Marie, Patrick, Timothy, Beverly, Jay, Seamus, Cassidy, Celine, Paul, Skozny, Lynn Conover, Becky Richardson, Lori Davis, Lisa Lane, Leslie, and Larry Johnson, 22 grandchildren, five great-grandchildren, sisters Una Murray and Patricia Heinz, and brother Jarvis. Therefore, be resolved that we elected Ferndale officials do hereby extend our community's condolences to the family of John P. Weir. Do I have support on this? Thank you. That's an Irish family.
Irish Catholic family, yeah. Do we need a roll call? Do we need a roll call?
I don't think so. If she was...
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Councilman. Our next resolution is a resolution of appreciation to Wags and Wishes, and Councilwoman Piana is introducing that.
At the last meeting, I asked the city clerk to draft up a resolution thanking Wags and Wishes for their service to the city of Ferndale, and I'm just going to read it. Wags and Wishes Animal Rescue was formed by Ferndale resident Angela Potter to find homes for unwanted and neglected animals and provide a no-kill alternative to traditional animal control methods. And Wags and Wishes stepped in to offer their assistance when animal control services were eliminated in the fiscal year 2011 city budget. The organization has utilized the city animal shelter at the public works yard since July 2010. Wags and Wishes has been a true grassroots effort to save numerous dogs and cats. Ms. Potter has worked to find foster homes and forever homes for the many animals that have come into her care. From fundraiser events to cleaning the facility, Ms. Potter and her volunteers have put in countless hours for the sake of the animals relinquished to Wags and Wishes. The community's support for Wags and Wishes has been an inspiration and a testament to the importance of this mission. Residents and businesses have donated their time, homes, establishments, and dollars to support the organization. Many dogs and cats have been spayed or neutered, received love and medical care, and have been given a second chance. Oakland County has offered the city Ferndale free animal control services, which precludes other animal care organizations from operating city property. Therefore, is with appreciation and gratitude that the city transitions from Wags and Wishes Animal Rescue to Oakland County Animal Control Services. The city of Ferndale commends Ms. Potter and Wags and Wishes and anticipates many years of continued success in their mission to find homes for adoptable animals. Therefore, for resolve, the city of Ferndale Council thanks Angela, Wags and Wishes for their initiative in undertaking the monumental task of providing care and finding homes for unwanted dogs and cats in Ferndale. So, everybody knows Wags and Wishes was a branding nonprofit, and they can continue operating it as a nonprofit, and the city of Ferndale gave them sort of their leap into standing on their own. So, just wanted to thank their service to the city.
Thank you. Our final presentation this evening is from the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission. I think they've got a Green Week coming up.
Douglas Christie, the chairperson for the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission. Hello, council, and everyone at home, and Mayor. Yes, we are here today to announce Ferndale Green Week. It's the third annual and the first in the state, and as far as I know, I think it's still the only city week-long celebration of sustainability. The event starts this Saturday, April 16th, and goes through and concludes on Friday, April 22nd. There are events, activities every day, and I'm just going to kind of go through some of them for us tonight. More information can be found on the downtownferndale.com website, that's the DDA's website, or by calling the Green Team hotline, which is 248-709-9301, or finding us on Facebook, that's the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission on Facebook. Okay, so, this Saturday is the first event. It is presented by Handmade Detroit. It is the craft revival show at the Loving Touch Pool Hall on Woodward Avenue, just south of Nine Mile. There are over 25 artisans or makers, if you will, displaying their goods. It is an all-ages, no-cover event, and that goes from 12 noon to 6:00 PM this Saturday. There is also a fundraiser green garage sale going on for the JFK School. I don't have all the details of that, but I know that it has been posted on some of the websites. But again, that's through the JFK Green School, and it is a fundraiser on Saturday also. Sunday, the 17th, is a bicycle ride presented by the Sierra Club Green Cruise. It's a 20-mile spring ride. It starts at the Downtown Ferndale Bike Shop, which is at 163 West Nine Mile Road. We're going to meet out back. The ride will head up towards Birmingham, back through Royal Oak, and end up back in Ferndale. We roll out about 10:00 AM. Helmets are required. It's for 16 years old and up. It's a moderate pace. When you come back, or if you decide not to do the ride, there will be also free massages from Greenleaf Body Works, some bananas supplied by Western Market, tons of water, other specials going on at the bike shop, and they'll be doing some activities probably in the parking lot, too. So, again, that's Sunday, the 17th. The event is from 10 to 2. The bike ride starts at 10:00 AM. On Monday is two events going, are two events going on, Movie Day and also Garden Day. The Movie Day is at the library. The Sierra Club is presenting the film Dirty Business: Clean Coal, Clean Coal, and the Battle for Our Energy, and that's at 7:30 at the library. The Sierra Club will also be tailing to that event if you would like some more information on other forms of energy and things related to the environment. Also, on Monday, the second event is presented by the Ferndale Beautification Commission, and I believe they're going to be up here later tonight to talk about it. That's Garden Day, and that's taking place at the Koolik Community Center at 6:30. They have a special presentation that evening. Tuesday is Water Day. That is presented by the Ferndale Environmental Commission. It's our regular Green Tuesday event, and the topic is on water conservation, keeping money in your pocket, and saving on water. That starts at 6:30, and that is also going to be at the library. We'll also have a special opportunity to meet Mr. Rain Barrel. He's a local guy that sells rain barrels and knows all kinds of stuff about them. So, if you have questions about water conservation by utilizing a rain barrel, if you've been thinking about that, we'll have an expert on hand to answer your questions. Wednesday, again, at the library, is Youth Day. We have two events going on that day. The master composters of the South Oakland County Water Authority are presenting a hands-on ecosystem workshop for kids, third grade and up, give or take. 4:00 PM is when it starts, and we're looking for preregistration. You can take care of that at the library by calling them or stopping by. The kids will have an opportunity to get their hands dirty and do a planting, and it's a self-contained ecosystem that they can take home with them then, and that's at 4:00. Later that evening, at 6:15, environmental singer-songwriter Joe Riley is going to be doing a special family storytime with singing and storytelling, and if you've ever had a chance to catch him, he's fantastic. The kids will love him. And at both of those events, Treat Dreams will be giving away free ice cream. Can't take it with you into the library, but you can keep it in the lobby area and in the presentation rooms, but not around the books, is what I've been told. So, that's Youth Day at the library on Wednesday. Thursday is Local Day. We are suggesting that the community residents spend the day discovering Ferndale's diversified community of stores, restaurants, and nightlife, and to kind of enhance that, or to, I guess, give people another opportunity to see some inside things that the city has done specifically at the library. The architects who designed the green library, Finchansky Whistler Architects, I might have pronounced that close. Did I? Okay, great. They're doing a special presentation at 6:30 on green aspects of the library, and after the presentation, they're going to be doing tours, behind-the-scenes tours, of the green elements of the library. So, if you've ever been curious of what actually makes the library green, that would be a perfect opportunity, and that's going to be right after the 6:30 presentation from the architects. On Friday, that is Earth Day, and that would conclude the Green Week. There's a special celebration of the 41st Earth Day, and that will be taking place at the Loving Touch Pool Hall again. Doors are at 7:00. Again, no cover. We will be presenting the Ferndale Green Business of the Year Award. We'll again have some free massages from Greenleaf Body Works, lots of free food from local businesses. And the Sierra Club will be presenting a special Sierra Club and Beer event, debuting an organic beer and having specials, and if you answer some green questions, you might even get a free beer ticket. Look for me to try to win. There'll be also some other merchants presenting and showing some of their items, like Green Thumb, for example, where I have some free seeds, and they'll be there to answer questions about getting your garden going. There'll be also the Sierra Club and other eco-sustainability nonprofit groups there to answer questions for you, and just a good time to kind of hang out and celebrate Earth Day. So, that is Green Week. Thank you for your time, and I hope to see some or all of you at some of these events.
Doug, thank you.
Through the chair, just to let you know, Doug, I did ask Del Schmidt, our cable director, to put this information on our cable system, so it should be cycling through soon.
Excellent. All right, great. Thank you.
Yeah, full week of activities. Thanks for pulling that together.
Yeah, a lot there. So, again, you can try to contact the DDA, or call the hotline, or go to the Facebook, and we'll try to answer any of your specific questions.
And the 41st Earth Day, which makes me feel a little old, because I remember the first one. You probably don't, but I do.
It's 7:00.
That's right. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes our presentations for this evening, and so now, at this point, we have call to audience. Call to audience, as you all probably know by now, is 30 minutes now, and more time needed at the end of our meeting, if needed. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less on any issue that is not on the agenda, as you'll have an opportunity to talk about those things at that time. Please state your name and your address, so that the city clerk can enter it into the information. Good evening.
Good evening, council. My name is Trevor Johnson. I'm here to represent the FESC, the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission, and I'm with our water conservation tip of the month here. I'm just going to roll through here. So, observation is really key. Monitor your water use and use your meter as a tool to check out your water usage. A lot of us pay our bills online, and it just gets taken out of our account, but make sure to take a look at your use, and you can see if there's a spike that's happening on there that you weren't even aware of. Fix leaks, toilets, sinks, et cetera, a drip, a minute, you know, it's a lot of water. Don't let the water run when you're not using it. For example, shut it off when brushing your teeth or washing your hands. Run clothes washers and dishwashers only when they are full. You can save up to 1,000 gallons of water a month. Water your lawn and garden with the, in the morning or the evening, when the temperatures are cooler, to minimize your evaporation, or alternatively, replace your lawn with native perennials that like the sandy soil that we have here, so you won't have to water them as much. Or fall in love with the brown lawn. Those are cool as well. Purchase water-scent certified appliances when possible, and look to replace old showerheads, faucets, and toilets with low-flow versions. And that's it for the green tip, but come to our Green Tuesdays, Tuesday, April 19th, 6:30, at the Ferndale Public Library, to learn more about water conservation tips.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, State Council staff. I'm Earl Smartman, 3341 Grayson Street, and this evening, I'm speaking for the Ferndale Rotary Club. This coming Thursday, at 5:00 till 8:00, we're having a, our second annual fundraiser dinner. It's going to be held at Blooms, 503 East Nine Mile. There will also be a silent auction with it. Admission, too, the affair gives you a ticket to win a prize, a very nice score prize. Cost will be $10 for adults. Kids five and 10, between five and 10 are $5. Children under five is free. Funds are to fight the polio and the awards that we present to the Ferndale High School students on their scholarship programs. And again, Ferndale Rotary, and we're very pleased to announce that Howie Bayou is co-sponsoring this event this year, and we're very happy to have him aboard, and we'd like very much to see all of you there. Please come join us.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Good evening, Peggy.
Good evening. I'm Peggy Snow, chairperson for the Beautification Commission. Good evening, everyone. And we're very happy to be proud of, or a part of, Green Week again this year, and we have the Monday Plant Day, and we're going to have Judy from Telly's Greenhouse. She's going to be speaking about propagation by cuttings, and she'll demonstrate how to increase your supply of flowers in the gardens. Soft-stem plants are fun and easy to multiply by taking cuttings. For multiplying shrubs, a quick lesson in layering will be shown, and this is good for people who want to save some money and have more flowers growing in their garden. And that's Monday, the 18th, at 6:30 to 8:00 at the Community Center. Everyone's welcome. And while I'm here, I'd like to, and since it's getting so nice out, everyone's going to be out working in their yards, and my husband was out all day Sunday. Boy, he was just aching today, but it was just a lot to do. And people will be seeing neighbors who are proving their yard, so we're looking for, in May, we'll be looking for nominations, and if you call the City Yard, Roseanne will be happy to take the address of the nomination for us and pass it on. And we always help, we like, we prefer that the residents nominate the people instead of just us, so we'd like some help in that department. And also, we're looking for some new members. It's a fun group. We, it's not a lot of work, and we, the more we, more members we have, the less there is for all of us to do, so we're just looking for a couple of new people. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Nancy Gedder, and I've come to speak in favor of the upcoming village on May 3rd. I've been proud of Ferndale over the years. It's a well-run city, and it's just been a wonderful place to live. It's like a Norman Rockwell town. Great place to raise kids, and through the years, we have supported the city. Just talk about the library for a minute. A few years ago, we voted separate village to support the library, and then again, we voted to increase the library, and this past year, the folks in Troy voted against a library village. Troy's a much richer city than Ferndale. They have two major shopping malls, Oakland Mall and, who, what's that one? That's 16...
Somerset.
Somerset, yes. So, they have a much bigger tax base, but in Ferndale, we supported our library, and I'm proud of us. It is a very well-run city. The streets are plowed in the wintertime, leaves are picked up in the fall, they're composted, they return to people who garden in the spring. It's a walkable city. You know, I feel safe walking and riding my bike, and I want it to stay that way. I attended a meeting of the Woodland Park Improvement Association recently, and Police Chief Collins spoke, and he said we were down 10 policemen. So, I know that there have been cuts. The City Hall is only four days a week now. If you cut that more, you know, how are people going to be able to support their families if they're only working three days, three days a week? You know, this is really, really serious stuff, and I want my city to stay just like it is, safe and clean, and a good place to live. So, I urge people to please support the village. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And of all the city's assets, Nancy, you're definitely one of them as well. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Mary Fredericks. I live on University Street. I am a member of FACT, Ferndale Residents Against Council Tax. FACT will be holding a series of town hall meetings this week, and we are putting out an invitation to all residents, including the city council, being that you are all residents of Ferndale. We will have meetings on Tuesday, April 12th, at Sam's Grill, 6 to 7. Kulik Center, 6 to 7 on Wednesday. We're having one on Thursday, on the corner of Nine Mile and Woodward. That's the old bank building there and the beautiful gray building that sits there, from 6 to 7. We will have one Saturday at Leonard Brothers. I don't know if you're familiar where that is. Okay, that would be room 106, from 12 to 1. And the Double E Restaurant on Saturday afternoon from 3 to 4:30 at, for one hour also. So, we have one just practically every day this week, and we are extending an invitation to all residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
How you doing? I'm Nick Pinto, 1585 University, and basically, I'm coming here asking you guys for some help. I have a sewer problem recently. Breaking my feed to the main sewer underneath the road, not in my yard, but underneath the road. I had a plumber come out, got me the quote, came to the city, said, you know, it's my responsibility. First, I got a problem with that, because I can't control what goes on the road and what kind of damage could happen to what's under the road. Second of all, you know, I can't access it, so I can't maintain it, so I don't know how I'm supposed to be responsible for this. And when you guys came through and did the concrete repair, you guys repaired the crew in front of my house. That wasn't billed to my taxes. City saw that they were responsible for the street, so I think the city should be responsible for the repair under the street. When they went to, the plumber went to the water department or the CDS, the department, he was told that on top of me paying for the repair bill for the plumbing, that the city wanted $2,035 from me for the concrete repair, and that I could not bring my own contractor in. I had to go through the city.
The concrete repair to the street?
Yes. And the reason he was given was because the city's broke, and this would be a good way for the city to make money. Now, I pay my taxes, and that's how the city makes money off me. I don't find it ethical that, what he was told, you know. So, I'm coming to you guys to kind of, please, look into this for me, get back with me here in the near future, because I don't want this to, the pipe hasn't collapsed yet, so I'm still running, but I'm living on borrowed time here.
Have you talked to either our city manager or, no, not...
No, I called the city manager's office and was referred to the CDS, the water department, whatever the, and when I spoke to them, they just told me it's the residents' responsibility. I said, you doesn't have the money to repair this, and there was nothing they could do for me. So, I'm bringing it to you.
Appreciate that, then I'm going to, I'm going to defer to our city manager.
If you can give me your name, address, phone number, I'd be happy to check the details on it. I will say, it is typical that the house lead, and they only run from one side of the street or the other, where the main sewer is, the city is responsible through water and sewer rates for the main lines typically, and that the house lead, your line going to, from your house back to the sewer, is typically the homeowner's responsibility, but be happy to look into it, then we can speak about it. I know our DPW person is here, but if they take a break in a minute, or just give me your name, address and phone, and we'll be happy to check it.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, the only part of that that I don't understand is, if it's under the street, I have no control, so therefore I shouldn't be responsible. And we can, we'll discuss it, I have no problem with that at a later date, but I even have, I have estimates, I have the drawings and pictures of this, of the street showing how it's, the previous repair you guys did on the street, you did three pieces of my concrete when the city did the sidewalk repair. Two of those pieces, or two of those pieces need to be replaced again. They tagged one of them, the sidewalk, the one that I'm responsible for, they didn't tag the street, which is cracking and actually tipped deeper than the sidewalk, which the city would have been responsible for. It's very confusing, I'm very concerned about this, and I don't want.
And we want to get to the vibrant, I assure you our city manager will follow up, and if he doesn't to your satisfaction, come back and let us know, okay?
Not a problem.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So make sure, you want to leave with your name and address and or phone number with, with our clerk, that'd be great. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, good evening, Anne Heller, 1024 Leroy, speaking as President of Ferncare, and with our gorgeous great poster, because it's that time again, our third annual dinner is Thursday, May 5, Cinco de Mayo Day, and this time we are going to be at the Ukrainian Cultural Center in Warren, which is on Ryan Road just south of 696, many, many people have had grand meals there, and that's where we're going to do the dinner this year. It is critical, they're always critical, our fundraisers are always critical, but for us and for the free clinic, it's two things, one, we need to get into our permanent site, and this absolutely will help, and also, of course, the clinic is free to all of our patients, but as you all know, it is not free to run at all. Medications, lab tests, single-use medical supplies, all cost money, and even though we're wonderful, and the board is wonderful, and our volunteers are wonderful, they still make us pay these bills, and so we do need, it would be very, very helpful so that we can continue to do this. I also need to tell you that we completed our six-month review, from August to December, we saw 151 unique patients, with just under 400 visits by those patients, and that indicates how ill our patients are. Most of our patients come with two major chronic diseases, hypertension and diabetes, or hypertension and thyroid, or diabetes and thyroid, and besides a number of other things, so these, our patients are pretty ill. I also need to tell you that we drew, in the first six months, we drew from 26 cities in the state, that's, it's incredible. The top six, Ferndale was top, Hazel Park following, Madison Heights following that, Southfield following that, and then Royal Oak in Detroit following that, is our, the ones with, where we got our most patients from, but 26 cities, including Wyandotte, Burton, on the other side of Flint, the thing, you know, besides Walt Lake, Blimfield Hills, and a number of others. Another thing is that we have almost equal men and women patients, which is not common at all, and for anybody that's in public health, this might be a good master's project for somebody, and most of our patients are, at least well over half of our patients are between 50 and 64, just as somebody said, getting, getting ready for Medicare, but not quite there yet, but we need to, we need to help, and we need to help them. So please, if you are free, May 5, our dinner, the tickets are $40 apiece, you can just go on our website, www.ferncare.org, to pick up tickets, and thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Anne, appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening, council, here I am again, Katie Hersberger, 750 West Maplehurst. I've attended the budget meetings so far on Wednesday nights, and I have learned a lot, and I want to encourage more and more of the citizens of this city to come out and listen to the budget projections from each and every department. They will be amazed at what we will lose if the village does not pass. I think they'll even be more amazed if the village continues not to pass either in May or November as a possibility, that the city is going to face some very, very drastic situations. So I want to encourage people to come out to the budget meetings, and listen to what each and every department is going to have to cut, give up, change, rearrange, or demolish. Thank you.
Thank you Katie. Good evening.
Good evening, and welcome, it's the first time I've seen you sitting up there.
Yeah, I've seen you.
I'm Don Pozinski, I've been a resident of Ferndale since 1980, and I'm here to voice my opposition to the village. Again, I have to say that I haven't seen this council be responsible with our money. We don't need another totem pole, we don't need another statue, the fear-mongering that I'm hearing up here, the charter mandates that we fund our police and fire, you're not going to lose the police and fire department, and I, I just really, it grinds me to hear people say that. If you really had respect for our money, you wouldn't be having a special election, and all the money that that's going to cost, you would wait until November. And, I'm sorry, but I just, I love Ferndale, I don't see Ferndale rating anywhere near the highest tax rate in the state, I don't see it. Cuts are tough, cuts are really, really tough, I've been up here before and talked about the cuts that my family has had to go through. If this 38% increase goes through, the foreclosure that I'm facing right now would be a reality, and it'll be a reality for other, many other people that live here. So, I am asking residents of Ferndale to come out on May 3rd to a special election, take advantage of the fact that it's your money, it's our money that's being spent for the special election and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening Dennis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Dennis Whitey, 1491 Spencer, co-chair of the Yes to Ferndale's Future Campaign, just came from a forum over at the library, a pretty good forum, Chamber of Commerce put on, quite a bit of ideas from both pro and con for the May 3rd election, but there will be another one coming up, Citizens for Fair Ferndale are holding a forum on Saturday, April 23rd, at the Public Library right across the parking lot there, from 2:00 PM to 3:30. I've already agreed to represent the Ferndale, Yes to Ferndale's Future side, and I know Mr. House will have somebody if not himself representing the no vote. Also in addition to that, we have a fundraiser coming up this Friday, April 15th, at 6:00 PM, over at Sneakers Pub, one of our local businesses is helping us out, looking forward to Ferndale's Future as well, but for pretty much a $5 donation, you get happy hour pricing throughout the night, so come on out, and come on out to Sneakers Pub this Friday, April 15th, at 6:00 PM. And also to, some of the comments that were just made from the speaker before me, one of which is, we don't need to scare people in the community, the intent is not to scare people, the intent is to inform people, and unfortunately, our reality is scary, and the intent isn't to scare people to vote yes, but to educate people what a yes vote or a no vote would mean. It is scary losing police, it is scary losing fire, it's scary losing advanced life support, senior services, recreation, City Hall hours, the whole nine yards, it is scary, I agree, but that's not the intent, is to get out and scare people, it's to inform them of what we're, what we would lose, have we not passed this village on May 3rd. Also, I agree, she said, you know, there's certain things we don't need, one of the examples she said is, we don't need another totem pole. I agree, we need police, we need fire, we need EMS, we need advanced life support, we need community services, we need a City Hall that's responsive to our residents' needs, we need a council that meets every two weeks, in a clean environment, so that people can come up here and say, pretty much say their piece. Having an emergency financial manager come in here, you won't see anybody listening, you won't, I mean, you'll have a City Council, but they'll be powerless pretty much under the dictator, so that's, that's the other thing. Another issue that would.
Can you close for three minutes, Dennis?
Yes, sir, just the last thing to wrap it up, special election in May versus November, sure, we could wait till November and save $10,000, and July 1st start balancing the budget with laying off our police and fire, that's not something I want for this community, I don't think it's anything that most residents want in this community. So I appreciate that, and hopefully you can get out and support us, we're getting good positive feedback from our campaign. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name's Alan Solve, I'm a member, proud member of FACT. Regarding water, water conservation, I'm glad he brought that up, I see the city of Ferndale does use a lot of water, waste, they waste a lot of water, and I can point out a few situations, especially in the irrigation department, they saturate, ponding, overwatering the turf, I see it running off into the, into the street, into the gutters, going down the sewer, which is my money, and also watering on rain days, we're getting torrential rains, and here they are, watering, irrigating, that's more money, so that's, I just want to point that out. Mayor, you brought up about your, your house taxes, could you clarify something for me? You said it was $1,000, was that?
Oh, it's a, it's a forum earlier today, I just.
Well, and in the paper, in the Tribune, too.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, that's right, you say, you stated it was $1,000.
That's correct.
Could you specify, was that what you didn't have to pay?
That's how much my personal taxes on my personal property went down in a two-year period.
Or just, not how much you had to pay?
No, no, no.
No, you didn't have to pay $1,000 less, so your property tax value just went down $1,000.
No, I paid $1,000 less in taxes.
Oh, you paid $1,000 less?
In a two-year period, $1,000.
Okay.
That's correct.
I, congratulations.
You can Google my address and.
No.
But, and everybody's is different.
I just want to, because you just specified it was what it was, I just want to hear, clarify it, that you, you saved about, what, $500 a year, correct?
Over two, yeah.
Well, my taxes haven't done that, I don't know.
And I'm careful to say, everybody's situation is different, if you go to our website, you can, on the, on the city of Ferndale website, you can put in your address, and you can find out exactly how much you've paid in taxes over the last number of years, and so that's what I did, that's.
I'm pretty aware of what I pay.
Sure.
Trust me, I do, because I, I see it on my mortgage payment, so, but anyways.
I wasn't, by the way, because mine gets escrowed, and I think a lot of residents don't understand that, you know, I don't see that bill because I don't pay it directly, I pay it into my escrow, so it was, it was eye-opening for me to, to see what has been happening.
Well, I just wanted that clarified, so, that's, funny, um, also we have a, FACT has a Facebook page, you know, so if anybody wants to come on and chat with us, we can do that. And regarding the tax, I, I don't see any harm for people who are straddling, defense about, to support it, just to wait until we get some more information about how the, the union negotiations are coming, and seeing what comes out of that, and money that comes in, and other factors that are involved, and just, you can always wait, the sky's not going to call, fall on top of you, we're not going to be running in the streets in panic, so I, I would just say, if you're straddling, just be safe and say no, you can always wait till November, and then say, okay, we need it, and do it then, but that's my opinion. Vote no, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone, oh, yes, for a second time, Don.
Okay, I'm back again, this is a suggestion, I am totally not being facetious, for everybody out there that supports this, and can, write a check, send it to the city. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public that would like to address call to audience? If not, thank you, I'll call, I will close call to the audience, and we'll move on to our next agenda item, which on our agenda now is the consent agenda. Now, consent agenda, our items listed that we, on City Council, consider routine, and we will enact by one motion, copies of the consent agenda have been viewed, can be viewed on at the library, but let me read what they are, and anybody can pull any of these items if they so choose. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held March 28th, 2011, and special meetings held March 23rd and 30th. Approval of the license agreements with Club Bart and Dino Drop Inc. for outdoor cafes on the pedestrian alley. Approval to amend the city fee resolution to add a $25 annual renewal fee for massage establishment licenses. D, approval to amend the city fee resolution to establish a $75 non-refundable application fee for demonstrations on public property. E, approval of MDOT request for temporary exemption of noise ordinance requirements, and F, approval of payment agreement with Posh Entertainment Inc. doing business as Eden Nightclub, and resolution to rescind objection to renewal of Class C liquor license. And finally, consent item G is the approval of bills and payroll as certified by the city manager to be paid, subject to the review of the council finance committee. Council, what is your pleasure on the consent agenda?
I would move that we adopt the consent agenda in its entirety.
Moved by Galloway, supported by Piana, yes.
Sherri Wells.
Sherri Wells, how are you?
West Troy.
Yes.
I didn't have a chance to look at the agenda before tonight, I usually do, get online and whatever, I can open up the documents and read them.
Sure.
So I'm just curious, MDOT is the Michigan Department of Transportation, on E, for temporary exemption of noise ordinance requirements, could someone just tell me in a sentence what they're up to?
The city manager can address that.
Crack ceiling, construction projects on Woodward.
A what?
Crack ceiling, where they come through.
Oh, ceiling cracks.
Yeah, they're going to fix the cracks in the road, and some of their machinery makes a little bit more noise than our ordinance allows, and so they have.
Okay, but it won't be between 10:00 at night and 7:00 in the morning?
No.
About, yeah, it will.
From 7:00 until 10:00 AM.
Pardon me?
7:00 PM to 10:00 AM.
Oh, they are going to be doing it at night, then?
That's why they'd ask for an exemption, to do roadwork.
For one week.
For one week.
For one week.
Which week?
June 16th through June 28th.
16 through 28 is two weeks. 7:00 PM to 10:00 AM. Okay, that's all I need.
Thank you. There was a motion and a second, is there any other discussion about the consent agenda?
They'll only be here for one or two days, is that, two days?
Two weeks.
No, two weeks is for the entire length of the project, if I understand it.
Yes, it's, 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 it's two weeks for that work.
All right, let's call roll on the consent agenda, please.
Councilmembers Galloway.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, that passed. So that moves us to our regular agenda, and regular agenda item A is a consideration to purchase a Ferrari igniter aerial platform vehicle, i.e. a fire truck, and I think the fire chief is here, probably has some details about that, city manager may have, has some comments about this as well?
Yes, Kevin's coming up.
Okay.
This is a grant project that, that the city through our chief had applied for, it's to purchase a new aerial platform, pumper, ladder combination. One of the key things is pointed out, I don't want to say everything the chief would say, but, you know, it's very critical with less manpower, that we have a piece of equipment that can be operated by a couple of people and set up fairly quickly. Probably more, I'll let him go ahead and make his comments, and if there's something we need to add. I do think this is a creative way to get a major expensive piece of equipment by taking advantage of federal funding when it suits our needs to do so.
So chief, tell us about your.
Well, short synopsis, we started out with the aerial we currently have sitting in the barn, it is defunct due to non-destructive ladder testing, it no longer meets any safety requirement, can't go over 80 feet, and carry more than 250 pounds, so we can't flow water and put a guy up there with his gear on to rescue anyone, so it's been out of service and sitting there. So, looking at how we got to that truck, we went back and kind of reverse engineered things we need to look at, and one is a truck that's built heavy-duty that can carry the weight of both a pumper, the hose, the tools, and the ladder itself, and support that ladder so that we have something that'll last us for a long period of time, and something that we don't have to put a lot of maintenance time or issues into. So we went out there looking at about 10 different trucks, and it came down to the one to beat, and it was the Ferrari, and then I was comparing other trucks back to it because of its safety factors, ladders overlap by eight feet, it carries the weight we need, their welds are consistently straight down the line, if they have a 10-inch weld, it's 10 inches, it's not spot welded, if they have a three-foot weld, it's three feet. This truck is a heavier aluminum box metal for the truck than other vehicles, it's 3/16 inches thick versus an eight, so the Ferrari is a little bit higher priced than the Florida sheriff's bid that we're asking to jump onto, and the base price was 903, but the truck is well-built, all the parts we need can be bought locally by Mike and Jean at the yard, from our local Napa stores, and the Ferrari supplies us with any heavy-duty pieces of equipment, like a cylinder that should we have problems in that. They have a really good record, they don't have a foothold in Michigan, so in dealing with them, we gave them our specs, and they actually went ahead and built the truck, and from my understanding. And from my understanding, I have both, uh, the local J&amp;J company representative for our, and a Ferrara factory rep here, uh, who's an expert on the ladder. And, uh, we've had multiple agencies, including the Fire Department of New York, trying to snatch this vehicle out from underneath us. So that's why I'm bringing it to council now, so hopefully we can, uh, look to purchase this. The $675,000 comes from the FEMA bid, uh, EMW 2009, FV 03116. And then the balance of the share would come from our motor pool fund, which I don't know that number off the top of my head.
It's in our resolution.
But it's in your resolution there. Um, I would entertain any questions from council, probably be easier than we keep talking about.
Yes, questions in council. Councilwoman Baker.
I've got a question. Um, so about 70% of the cost of the, of the truck is being covered by the FEMA grant. I used to do the math.
Yes, yeah.
Um, the, um, the, the question, um, that came to my mind that I think is answered in your memo, but I just want to double-check, um, is why did the price go up a bit? And if I read your memo correctly, when we initially applied for this grant, um, over a year ago, or about a year ago, uh, we were spec-ing out trucks that had some used parts on them.
That is correct.
And when we received the final notification of the grant award from FEMA, one of their stipulations was that we could not buy a truck that had any used parts on it.
They have to buy a new build. It could be a demo model, but it has to be new-built, not, not previously engaged by another agency or.
The, the federal government does sometimes change the rules after.
Well, I think originally.
So I'm not surprised by that.
Originally, when Chief Schmidt wrote it, um, he was looking at a refurb ladder, which he was told he could do at the time.
Right.
With a new chassis underneath. Um, we're also kicking it up from just a ladder to a bucket on the end. And again, looking at where we're going with manpower and that, and also the future for consolidation, this truck can meet anything we need to do in the future, whether we shrink or we can consolidate and get a fire authority going. And if we should have to sell it, it's got everything it needs to be a top-dollar grabber in, in the future if we did have to do, uh, sell, put it for sale if we had some other major change in the next several years. So, um, this truck will last the city of Ferndale and give us big bang for our buck. We are paying more than 10% because it's, it's a more expensive truck.
Two, just two other quick questions. Um, the first is about how long will this truck be expected to last us with reasonable maintenance?
I would say the way we use ladder trucks, probably 15 years. And it's, it's so well-built that, you know, blindly looking into the future with no major cata, catastrophic events, easily 15 years. I, I don't see, because we don't, we don't run an aerial, but again, our, our running orders are going to change. We'll probably use it more frequently than we've ever used a ladder. But that's the beauty of it, is it takes two men to operate it. And within seven to 10 minutes, they can have 1,500 gallons of water flowing with just two men on it and it does all the work.
The, the last question, uh, thanks, Mayor, is are we planning on selling the ladder truck that we currently have? Is that marketable at all?
Yes, but part of our FEMA grant is because it's a life safety failure, we have to destroy the ladder. So I'm not sure exactly how we're going to go about that, but we are responsible for the ladder, so we can't get out into usage in some other smaller community that buys it and then says, oh, we just will ignore that. That ladder has to be destroyed. So I haven't really investigated, uh, what we're going to do with that. Maybe give it to the ATF? No, I'm just kidding. But yeah, we do, we do have to, uh, destroy the ladder and then the chassis, the truck itself is sellable.
Okay. Thank you, Governor.
Sure. Other questions of council? Yes.
Yeah, how old is the truck that we're replacing?
Uh, I think it's a 1989, 1989 Seagraves, 100-foot ladder, so that's what.
So over 20 years.
Over 20 years old.
All right. And is this a standard truck that other, um, fire departments use? Is there any way to share a truck or do anything like that as it goes by?
Actually, um, the, I thought of that issue about even possibly turning this grant back, but everyone in our local southeastern Oakland County here is short on staff. So out of the nine Oakway cities, there's only one city that full-time staffs an aerial device that could immediately be sent out to a fire and that would probably take them 15 to 20 minutes to get here or longer, depending on traffic situation. So until things are flowing better with shared service type organization and that, it really behooves us to have, uh, a truck of our own.
Okay, um, but this truck can be used as part of our mutual aid agreements that we already have in place with the other communities.
Absolutely.
So we are providing services beyond just Ferndale's borders.
We are going to be using it on a regular basis. And this truck is built to do that for us. It, it, it's a 2,000 gallon a minute pump, can take 1,500 gallons off of the aerial bucket. It's a lot of water and a lot of power, so it can do a lot of firefighting.
And, um, I don't recall, but this actually fits through the fire truck garage, right? We don't need to modify the truck garage in order to accept the truck?
We still have, we still have to modify a door to get, it is one of the short, shorter-profile trucks, but we still have to modify a door to get it out.
So we have to make an additional investment to accommodate the truck?
I thought we'd already approved.
I thought we already approved that, too.
Is it an additional accommodation or the accommodation that you'd already imposed?
No, the one we're working on now. We, we approved the architect and he's got all the drawings and has worked the numbers. And, uh, the truck will fit fine in the construction project. Um, what we're waiting for is to see what the bids would be, if we should do one door, two doors, uh, what would be fiscally more responsible. Um, but yeah, we're going to have to modify it just because of the length of the new trucks as well as the height. But this is a lower profile, it's a 10'9", so it's not that tall, but when it goes out and with the drop to the street, uh, we have a leverage thing where the rear end comes up, so we have to have enough clearance to get it out. That's a, that's the one key thing with older stations. And the reason we looked at that is the future of, you know, trucks is they're bigger and bigger. They brought in a couple of engines when we bought that new engine under Chief Schmidt and they wouldn't fit into the building and they were just fire engines. They weren't even a ladder truck. So then you have to spend a couple hundred thousand to split the frame and drop it down in there in order to shorten it, to get it into the, the building.
And then I, I don't know if you know the question or not, but I just want, how many times did you use the ladder truck last year? I mean, how many times does the ladder get used?
Um, we haven't used the ladder truck at all because it's been out of service.
Okay.
But typically, we used to run them on commercials. With this truck, we'll be able to run it as a regular piece of firefighting equipment because it'll be able to do everything an engine does, but it can go up with just two operators and they could snatch people or put water through a window. So let's say someone's burning a house and it's fully involved, these guys pull up with this truck, they could take that bucket, get right into the window and dump a lot of water in, even with only two firemen, where we couldn't enter the building with two firemen to put out the fire. So it gives us some more capabilities, but we're going to rethink the way we do things.
I guess the only other, yeah, the only other piece is that I, I look forward to seeing the, the final report of the, of the architect. And I think it was a, a really good idea on your part, chief, to find that, that one-time fix of reconfiguring that door, um, that will save us. It'll cost so much less to reconfigure the door than to keep reconfiguring our fire trucks. So I really appreciate you investigating that.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Actually, it was Pat Sheehan's idea.
Then thank you, Pat Sheehan.
Um, I have one question, well, two questions, but I, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to the first one. So there's no general fund dollars expended for this purchase, correct?
No.
So not an impact on our, our budget discussions. And secondly, and maybe this is to the city attorney, but you have a, a letter in here that addresses, uh, the way this was competitively bid, uh, and, and I'm not sure I, I understood it. Are you saying that it, it satisfies Florida's competitive bid process and therefore that transferable here?
It was competitively bid through Florida's, uh, bid program and, uh, the federal grant authorizes the city utilized that grant as well. Uh, it, uh, also, uh, Florida-based bid is consistent with the city's competitive bid policy. Uh, there was, as the chief has indicated, a, uh, certain modification beyond the original face bid, uh, but the, uh, one of the city's exceptions to the competitive bid was where there's a, a component to a larger, uh, uh, product, uh, from a manufacturer along the lines of this case, uh, which are add-ons to the original bid. So, uh, based on that exception, uh, it is in order also to, to approve, uh, this bid award.
Okay. I thought that's what I understood that to be, but I wanted to be clear. Thank you. Additional questions or comments of the chief? A motion would then be in order. Pardon me? Yeah, y- yes, sir. This would be an appropriate time to speak to this.
To ask a question.
Yes, to ask a question.
Yes.
Comments after we make a motion.
Yeah, I just, yeah, this is just a question. Has, uh, has, has looked into the idea of rather shortening that ladder to where it would pass to be able to be used until you can get the new truck or to make it more viable for sale afterwards? Make it a 40-foot or a 60-foot truck instead of an 80-foot ladder? Make it easier to sell, maybe cost less for us to tear it down.
The old truck you're talking about?
Yes, the old truck. Where it says it's, it won't pass the safety inspection at 80-foot, maybe it would pass at 60 or 40. And if nothing else, maybe make it easier for us to sell it and get more money out of it.
Chief, you want to take that?
I would believe that would be up to engineers, so that's kind of beyond our scope of dealing with it. But it's a 100-foot ladder and it only passed safety at 85 with 250 pounds. Well, even my lightest guys with all their air tanks and clothes on are over 250 pounds. So we technically couldn't put the ladder up and bring a person down. It would be deemed unsafe, so it's just a, a large liability. So we just completely took it out of service. What can be done to the ladder to make it safe? Uh, that would be up to an engineer to figure that one out. And I don't think we'll spend the money on, on that. But we will find out the legal ramifications of destroying the ladder or selling the ladder to another person other than a fire department, whatever it takes. But we'll make sure that project is all bundled up when we go to get rid of it.
Thank you. Thanks, chief. So a motion would be in order.
I just want to make a comment. I think he makes a good point. The cost of replacing or refixing that ladder is probably going to be more than what it is for us to pay for a new truck through this grant.
What?
Right? Well, the suggestion was.
Our out of pocket is seven.
Right? Did I, did I say that right?
I, I heard Kevin say, let whoever's going to buy it pay the engineering cost to shorten the ladder.
Okay. I know, but the, the cost, why aren't we fixing the ladder instead versus purchasing a new truck? Why aren't we fixing the ladder instead of?
I don't think it can be fixed. And our ladder is just a ladder. We have hose running up the metal, which is no longer considered a safety standard. Um, we don't have any pre-piped, this, this ladder is completely pre-piped water. So when you flip the water on, it comes out the end. And it also has remote control nozzles, so we don't have to put a firefighter up there. If we have to put the tip of the ladder into a bad fire, we don't have to cook anyone. And then some of the add-ons, which are the $60,000 increase, are extra air. So if we pull someone out of a building, we can put the victim on air immediately if we're still in a smoke environment. And the bucket itself is larger, what we call the platform. And the whole thing is set up for rescue and immediate use with just a couple firefighters putting it into play. So our ladder would take about three guys to set it up with the way it's built. And it doesn't carry a lot of stuff on it, so we couldn't really use it in the planned fashion, uh, with our current manpower and staffing, the way we can use this more, uh, design truck for our purposes.
Okay. That's the, that's the one I wanted to point out.
Thank you.
Good question.
So now a motion would be in order.
I would move to approve the purchase of the Ferrara Igniter aerial platform vehicle as stated in the Florida Fire Chiefs Sheriff's Association and the Association of County State Bid Award with the modifications required by the Ferndale Fire Department for a base bid price of $903,100? And modifications requested at $61,412 for a total cost of $964,512 to be paid from the Motor Pool Equipment Fund, account number 661-977, as submitted by the fire chief.
Is your support? Support. Moved by Baker, supported by Galloway.
So I guess I don't need to ask the question about whether or not the grant money's going into the motor pool? We can assume?
It is.
Thank you. Okay.
Additional questions or comments of council?
Thank you to you and Pat for that comprehensive investigation.
And we are saving a half percent by voting yes tonight. If we do, we, we take a half percent by signing immediately.
Thanks.
For saving.
Madam Plut, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Lennon.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item passes. Um, thank you, chief. Second regular agenda item this evening is the introduction of the 2012 budget. City manager, you want to?
Certainly. Um, budget and council's been working on this for the last, uh, three Wednesdays, if I remember right. Um, it's currently, um, I don't, it's, it's not a balanced budget because we're currently 2.3 million out of balance. Uh, in the first couple of meetings, uh, with council, when we got down to some of the detail adjustments, off of that total, um, plus or minus about $400,000. Um, so that there are things. But this translates, those kind, that kind of money translates to, um, 20, give or take, full-time people. Um, the inappropriate fund balance in the general fund is currently 3.8 million, but will be at year-end. Um, I think you covered early some of the discuss, we have other departments to meet next Wednesday. But this Wednesday, we meet with the court, policing, fire. And I'm sorry that the one person who thought they wouldn't ever be changed as a police and fire already left after, um, but basically you laid off eight police officers last year. Whoever we get two back, we laid off five fire, uh, I think it was four or five firefighters, four and one retired. And, um, council's still in consideration with another grant that the chief had, um, applied for, the safer grant as called. But I did want to point out that in the, um, and this isn't meant to be at all a partisan statement, um, pro or con for the millage, but in the anti-millage information indicates we could have balanced the budget by taking the safer grant. And if you take the money, you hire those employees. That doesn't cut anything into your, um, into the fund, budget deficit or the, um, so, you know, it's just an offset against the expenses of those employees. Uh, that's still, um, last year, the city cut over four, I think 40 employees with the combination of layoffs and, um, the early retirement option. of layoffs and the early retirement option. There are all kinds of things under consideration. We certainly encourage people to come and participate in the budget process. The council takes us very seriously, the staff do, and you've made numerous changes over the years, which may or may not be reflected in what we get back in terms of state shared revenue, and it would not be prudent to budget more than a percentage of that, seeing the governor's comments about, or what's been proposed, none of this has gone through the legislature yet, in terms of implementation. You know, we're heavily dependent on the statutory revenue sharing. In fact, I think it's one-point-two million out of, and our constitutional is one-point-four million, so almost fifty percent comes from the state that they continually cut back. Wouldn't be prudent to budget anywhere near close to that total, perhaps not even half of it, but we'll continue to take note of what's moving forward, but in the meantime, we have to prepare for, you know, the budget as if it's not going to pass, and the changes that will occur in the various departments. So encourage people to come. This is, there's a lot of detail associated with the budget. We'll be providing some more detail on Wednesday. As was mentioned at the forum earlier, what people pay in taxes is a combination of the millage rate times the value of their particular home, and on average, we are in the bottom quarter of what the millage rate times the value of an average home here in the city raises compared to many of our other neighboring communities. So happy to answer questions as they come up, but this budget especially is a work-in-progress, and it will, we will meet the requirements. Tonight's presentation formally does meet the charter requirements, however, we're a long way from balancing without significantly eliminating just about the entire fund balance for general fund.
Well, thank you, and I have to say, it's impressive how quickly you've gotten up to speed on our city's finances in the three months that you've been our city manager. I want to be clear for the residents that they understand what we're doing this evening. This is more of a formality. Our charter requires that we introduce the budget that we're starting with. This is not adopting the budget, which we will do in May, so this budget that we're introducing today is not balanced, and it doesn't include the cuts we're talking about, but this formally begins the process of council looking at this. So we're not adopting a budget today, we're simply, per charter, introducing the budget that we are working on, just to be clear about that. Any questions of council on this, or of the public before we have a motion? Yes, sir?
I was just going to indicate that the action required this evening is to actually set the public hearing. That's required both by state law and our charter on the budget, so.
Great point. So we will formally adopt a public hearing at our April twenty-fifth council meeting, where we will formally request members of the public to weigh in on our budget. Correct? Yes. Anyone, anyone at all want to address the introduction of the budget? If not, a motion would be in order.
I would move to approve the FYE 2012 budget review schedule, and to schedule a public hearing on the FYE 2012 budget pursuant to city charter, chapter nine, section eight, at the April twenty-fifth, 2011 regular council meeting.
Support?
Go ahead.
I support it.
Okay, moved by Baker, supported by Lennon. Further comments or questions?
Yes, I'd like to offer up an amendment to this motion. Cheryl Lynn and I just discovered that the schedule of the budget process for April thirteenth, the departments that are supposed to be presenting had been changed, and the updated budget schedule is not the one that we had talked about at the last budget meeting. So can you offer up an amendment for this here?
Yep. On the thirteenth, we had recreation, including the smart transportation special revenue fund. Those two are moving to April twenty-seventh, so that we will just be looking at court, fire, and police department on April thirteenth. I sent out the revision last Thursday. I'm not sure why it didn't make the packet, I apologize. So that would be the change. Recreation is moving from the thirteenth to the twenty-seventh, so the council can concentrate on court, police, and fire on the thirteenth.
All right.
I would amend my motion to reflect the city clerk's updates to the budget schedule.
Councilman Lennon, that's all right with you?
Yes.
All right, so amended. Have a-
One question.
Sure.
Are you preparing a two-year budget or a one-year budget?
A two-year budget.
A two-year budget. So this budget will run through June thirtieth of 2012.
We're only adopting a one-year budget.
We can only formally adopt legally the first year's budget, but we will be passing two years' worth of budgets.
Okay.
Yeah, presenting and passing, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yes. Further discussion?
Just a couple of comments. I say this every year, and I said it last week, and I guess I'll probably say it again a couple more times. I've been, this is my tenth budget that I've done, and I would guess that over the course of that time, we haven't had ten people show up to a budget meeting, and this year, more than ever, it's important that you show up, educate yourself, make comments, so that we can get feedback. Contrary to what folks may think, we do take your comments to heart when they're backed up with facts and information that's consistent with, you know, reality. So the budget here is a hundred and three pages long. It's not the same as a household budget. It's eighteen million dollars. It's a whole bunch of different pots of money that can be used for different specific things. It takes a long time to get up to speed on it. We had a lot of very sharp finance people on the fiscal, or the citizens fiscal committee, who studied it a couple of times a week for several months, and I think they got a pretty good handle on it, but there's probably still some ambiguity in their minds about how it all operates. So your time to be heard is on Wednesday evenings. Certainly, there'll be a public hearing afterwards, but the time to affect real influence on it is on these Wednesday meetings. I've heard a lot of things from folks saying that they have great ideas how we can balance the budget without raising taxes, without cutting any substantial services, and I wish these people would show up and share these ideas with us, rather than just telling us that they exist out there, because nobody, nobody, more than the five people up on city council here, would like to do that. It's no fun cutting services or raising taxes, but if you're going to keep all your great ideas to yourself, we can't implement them. So Wednesday night, six o'clock, from here until the time we get the budget passed, is your opportunity to give us your thoughts.
And I have one final comment.
Yes.
That these, you can access what departments are presenting on the city website, on the homepage, it says city council agendas, and you can go there and click on see which department is going to be demonstrating the impact of the fifteen to twenty percent cuts to their budget, because that's what council is asked for.
Good point. And it's worth noting that this Wednesday, both the police and fire departments will be presenting, so it will be a-
Long one?
A significant discussion. Further comments or questions about this item? Madam Plut, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Piana-
Yes.
Baker-
Yes.
Galloway-
Yes.
Lennon-
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item passes. That brings us to liaison reports. We'll kind of breeze through these quickly. The Eight Mile Boulevard Association, we just heard from them recently. I don't think there's an update there. The Michigan Suburbs Alliance. Councilwoman Piana, anything this evening?
No.
South Oakland County Mayor's Association, I'm disappointed to report that Southfield is holding it, but they're holding it on a Wednesday evening when I'll be here in budget session, and so the city manager and I will have to skip this one in lieu of our budget discussions, but we'll keep you informed on the other ones. SMCOG, anything new from SMCOG?
Nothing to report out since our last meeting.
Great. True. Transportation Riders United, any update from them? Woodward Avenue Action Association. Very good. That brings us to our part of the agenda called Call to Council, and I'll start with our police chief. Chief, anything, anything to report this evening? Any high-profile arrests? I don't know. Anything going on in the department this week?
Let's not talk about high-profile arrests. Let's talk about something a little bit nicer, after all this budget talk. Sergeant Baron Brown in our department has collaborated with the Loving Touch on Woodward Avenue in order to, he came up with this idea to replace bicycles that have been stolen from some children in our community over the last year. He came up with this idea, and we kind of like pitched this to councilwoman Piana, to replace these bicycles through a, some type of a fundraiser. So he came up with this idea of a pool hall contest, and he's working with our good friends over at the Loving Touch, and on May first, we're going to, we're still in the phases yet, but we think it's about from three PM to seven, we're going to have a tournament, where you can pay fifteen dollars to be part of the tournament, ten dollars just to come in, there'll be special drink prices, and we are soliciting any type of funds from any of the local businesses that would like to, but we have, so far have committed some funds, and we hope to have enough to replace ten bicycles to ten young people that may have lost their bikes through a larceny of the last year. So we're working on that. Any type of ideas, or anybody that's interested can certainly call me, or Sergeant Brown, or email us, tcollins@ferndalepolice.org, or bbrown@ferndalepolice.org, or they can call the desk during the day shift hours to ask for Sergeant Brown, and he will give them that information. So we hope to have a successful fundraiser, and I really applaud Sergeant Brown.
What a great idea. Chief, what was the time on that again?
Is the date again?
Three to seven.
On May first.
On May first. But the time, I don't believe, has been set in stone yet, so there'll be more information coming out by flyers, and try to get the information out through the city website and whatnot, but kind of excited to be back to the community.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief.
And we, that's all I want to talk about.
All right, sorry.
No high-profile cases.
No, nothing else. Gotcha. Chief Sullivan, anything further this evening, in addition to your new truck?
Thank you to council for passing that. That's a well-needed piece of equipment. A couple of things, I was pushing for people to come forward and volunteer for a CERT team, which is Community Emergency Response Team for storms and extra help when things are getting bad around the city, and I have to apologize, one gentleman did email into me a long time ago, but he kind of got buried in the email thing, and I kept checking it, and there's no one in there, so I'm going to get ahold of him, but we haven't had really much response, so again, if anyone would like to respond and be trained, it's an offshoot of the civil defense program from years ago, and you get a lot of, we'll give federal dollars, and we'll get a lot of people trained, but in an emergency or storm, they'll be used and come out and help us mitigate wires and other hazards while we are handling the more serious stuff, and then once they meet up with a police officer or firefighter, then they'll be directed in through our nine-one-one dispatch and used appropriately with command officers and that. So again, if anyone would like to do it, it's ferndalecert@ferndalefirrescue.org, and I'll be more than happy to take any suggestions or any help we can get.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Julie Hall, Parks and Recreation, hanging for us this evening.
Mayor and council, just wanted to thank our partner, Operation Kittyquip, for their support with our extravaganza egg hunt this weekend at the Martin Road Park. We had a hundred and thirty kids, plus their families, out there hunting for eggs, and Operation Kittyquip has been a great partner, providing additional perks for all the kids who signed up. And then also to remind everyone that our twenty-fifth annual foot frolic is coming up, May fifteenth, and there's more information on our website, ferndalerecreation.org, so those of you who like to run or be active, be sure to sign up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fertides, anything from the DPW department this evening?
Your honor, I'm all set.
Great, good to see you. Our city clerk, Cheryl Lynn.
I've had several calls this week from voters asking if it's too late to get an absentee ballot, so I just wanted to clear up some things about absentee ballots, because they're somewhat misunderstood. For the election on May third, voters may request an absentee ballot until four PM on Monday, May second. Remember that state law requires voters to apply in writing for an absentee ballot. Applications are available on the state's website and in the Ferndale City Clerk's office. Voters may come in person, fill out their application, and receive their ballot on the spot, but please remember that, again, state law does not allow us to give you a ballot for anyone other than yourself, not your daughter, not your spouse, not your neighbor. So don't wait until the last minute and want to do this by mail, or don't let your kids who are away at college wait till the last minute and think that you can run it to East Lansing for them. We're more than happy to help. We are here Monday through Thursday, eight until five-thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, Mr. Warren Webber, any-
Just along the lines of the budget, I wanted to indicate that, and I'll provide this to council, actually, it's a good information, I'll put it up on the website, but again, when you talk about averages, you need to know that's the average number of all these, but our value went down between 2009 and 2010, so the average house, for tax purposes, is double forty-eight thousand and change. That means they pay, to all sources, about twenty-one-hundred-and-twelve dollars in taxes. There are not too many communities, Oak Park, Auburn Hills, Porchna Madison Heights, Hazel Park, and I think Pontiac, where that total is lower than our total of what individuals here pay. In fact, the average of all Oakland County communities, the average tax bill is almost four thousand dollars. The median is about thirty-three hundred dollars. The largest tax bill, and I think it's Lake Angeles or one of those places, the average bill is thirteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, and, you know, here, again, just the average, and that means some higher, some lower, pay twenty-one-hundred-and-twelve dollars.
Thank you. Thank you very much. City attorney, Mr. Crist.
Attorney General, your honor.
Mayor Pro-Talm, Baker, hanging for us this evening?
Two things. There was a comment, actually, it's been made a couple of times by Sean House from the fact committee, about our city clerk not responding in a timely manner or in an appropriate manner to a Freedom of Information Act request. I've seen the correspondence between our city clerk and Mr. House. Our city clerk has not only been timely, she has been proactive in following up with him when he has missed meetings or not corresponded back with her. When people malign our city employees who are working so hard and are so understaffed, it really gets to me, and I just want to set that record straight, that our city clerk is absolutely responding, not only within the letter of the law, but in an expedient and proactive manner to those requests. There's also been misinformation, and I would say sort of a lot of hot air blowing around about the SAFER grant. We have an opportunity from the federal government, it's a great opportunity, to bring back four of our laid-off firefighters. It's something we want to do as a city council. It is not going to be financially feasible unless we pass a millage. People are saying that there aren't any strings attached anymore, that we don't have to retain people, that we can lay people off. It's not true. I sat through the webinar run by FEMA. It's the same webinar that our fire chief has seen, it's the same information that our city manager has seen. You cannot lay off firefighters if you accept this FEMA grant, this SAFER grant. You can ask for waivers. Trust me, they are not wild about granting these waivers. They said it very specifically. The only way that they will grant a waiver is if there is massive financial hardship and drastic cuts to public safety. It doesn't make any sense to bring people back for two months, for the city to then have to lay them back off if this millage doesn't pass, and then for us to take on the additional burdens of more COBRA costs and more unemployment costs. Financially, it does not make sense. If this millage passes, we will be able to get almost all of the money that we were initially offered. They prorated, we'll be a couple of weeks behind when we would have otherwise started taking this grant. We could get ninety-eight, ninety-five percent of the money. This is important for people to understand. We're trying to be as financially responsible as possible. So talking about the SAFER grant as if we're somehow being vindictive or trying to screw over our firefighters is just ridiculous.
And just for your information for council, I did have a long discussion with our SAFER rep, and she said, even though we couldn't lay off people, we would, in the city of Ferndale, fit the billing for an extension to the grant. So come our May vote, if we line everything up, we may be able to extend the grant to its full twenty-four-month period at that point in time, because we probably will qualify for that type of extension, but layoffs are a no-go.
That's fantastic. So we could still potentially get a hundred percent of this and just wait a few weeks to make that decision.
Absolutely.
It's fantastic. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Anything else? Councilman Lennon?
Two quick things. I was handing this about fifteen minutes ago. The gentleman does not like to speak in public, so, not it do I. I don't know anything about this group called We Are the People, a rally to promote middle-class families, state capitol building, Wednesday, April thirteenth, starting at one o'clock. If you attend that rally, they'd like you to bring a canned good to donate to Greater Lansing Food Bank. There are flyers on the back table, so if an individual will hand me that, I did what you asked me to do.
You're a man of the people.
I think democracy at its best is when you have two sides, opposing sides, and they work together and accomplish their set goals, and that's basically what we have now, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the pros and the cons, I appreciate the emails and the phone calls, that are both pros and cons, and I take everything into consideration. You can choose any acronym you want, Ferndale Against Counsel's Tax. This is not council tax. This is a group that we put together months ago that came to us and said, we suggest you do this. They put in countless hours, more hours than I would have wanted to do, to come up with this decision. Council voted to take their, you know, considerations and their decisions and their facts they presented to us, and put this on the ballot. I might go to the box and vote no. I don't know. I don't know yet. I'm looking at both sides. But it's not council's tax. This is a tax for the citizens and the residents of Ferndale and the business owners. I have not been able to attend all the budget meetings, but I have kept up the speed and I go through the budget. We will, there'll be drastic, drastic cuts if this does not pass. So I just want to let, you know, choose any acronym you want, this is something we decided to put on the ballot. I personally will say, I work for the residents. You voted me in, I'll do what you want, to a certain extent. However, we will survive, with or without this. We'll just take the necessary, make the necessary adjustments we have to make up here, so, you know, and they're not going to be good decisions, I mean, happy decisions for some people, but like I said, we'll get by, whether you vote for it or you don't. Thank you.
Councilman Galloway?
Not too much. There's lots of information out there. There's no reason why anybody has to, you know, walk into the voting booth uninformed. There's information on the website, there's countless meetings between now, well, not countless, but there's three or four, five, a half dozen meetings where you can educate yourself about it. You owe it to yourself and the citizens. You owe it to yourself and the citizens of Ferndale to do that. That's it.
Councilwoman Piana?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First, I represented the Michigan Suburbs Alliance and the city of Ferndale at the MML Capital Conference last week, and learned a lot about the hot topic legislative policies that MML is advocating on behalf of communities. And one of the top two things discussed at the conference is revenue sharing, well, three things. Revenue sharing, how are cities being scored, how do we align our budgets and the dashboards, because every city has to create a dashboard in order to prove or demonstrate to get revenue sharing. There's a couple of requirements that cities have to do. So, we put that in our Budget Decision Principles as a requirement, so the city manager is leading that effort. The other one was emergency financial management, and MML has some good information about this new law up on the website. But, the one that caused a lot of consternation around cities was the Bromfields Tax Credits. Governor Snyder would like to eliminate tax credits and allocate that dollars into a line item in the budget. Instead of having them approved administratively, they would now be done through appropriations. And, so, you would be having more government control over the money in which would be allocated back to cities for reinvestment. So, this is a pretty hot topic for communities, because during the down period, you're looking to have growth and do economic development, and they're about to take away some number one tools in order to make that happen. So, not only is revenue sharing shrinking, and they're also getting rid of the top toolbox and repurposing it and defunding it. So, as we look for growth in our state, they'll be taking away that leverage. So, the other one is, two good things. Since January, I've been approached probably by 10 people to have, "What's the city doing about backyard chickens?" And I am in support of having the city look into crafting an ordinance of how this would best fit the city. And there is a group of residents who have done a lot of the laid work, legwork on behalf of the community, or half of the city, and they've put together a rough draft in comparison of backyard chicken ordinances. This is a brand, this is a growing, popular initiative for local grown food, and so, I would direct the city manager and the CDS department to look at ordinance language and see how this backyard chickens would work in Ferndale. Doesn't include roosters. If anybody's been to Key West, you know roosters are not the best thing around. They ruin your vacation, because they cackle at 4:00 a.m. So, backyard chickens are different. And then, I also wanted to communicate about, I met with the city manager today, and Cheryl Lynn, and a Wayne State University professor and a couple of students, and I mentioned this a couple of months ago, it's an honors class of East Citizenship, and through my role at the Suburbs Alliance, and then as the city councilwoman, have them look at drafting or doing research on behalf of the city, so reducing staff time to do the research of crafting a Facebook policy, and looking at what's already out there in order to craft one for the city. As well as, they said that they would do analysis of our website, of our Ferndale's web presence, of what content is there and what content isn't there, and provide recommendations of what content should be there. And as part of that, they would be interviewing staff, so the department heads, about their desires and wishes with social media and as well as with the website. So, this is a great partnership to help students identify or learn how cities are run, give them experience working with professionals inside a city. But, the outcome of all of this is a recommendations from the students for the city to consider. This is not something that the city will, you know, says, "Students say this, and we're going to do it." But, we can pick and choose the priorities from this and to help augment the decisions that we have to make down the road. And my intent is this, is that how do we make a connected digital network for this city? And right now, I would categorize this, ours is somewhat, our digital network is disconnected and fragmented. So, the students will be looking at what works for the residents and city staff, so not, this is not just a city point of view, but it would also be a low cost and low time commitment on behalf of the city staff to consider. So, first, they're going to work on the Facebook policy initiative, and then in August, they will report out on their final recommendations and present to council. So, I'm pretty excited about that, because there's a lot going on.
Great.
Thanks for directing the volunteers to Ferndale.
Thank you. Thank you. And I guess I will close with just a couple of things. First of all, some sad news. Many of you know that we have a wonderful relationship with the city of Hazel Park, and their mayor, Jack Lloyd, often is at our council meetings. He's a friend of our city, he's a friend of me personally, I've gotten to know him very well over the last eight years that I've represented Hazel Park on the county commission. His wife Sandy suddenly and unexpectedly passed away last Thursday, and so, it's a very difficult time for him and his family and for the city. There will be a visitation tomorrow, which is, yes, tomorrow, Tuesday, April 12th, from 2:30 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. at the Swanson Funeral Home, which is on Dequinder in Madison Heights. And so, I will be there, and if there's any residents or councilpeople who want to stop by, that is the visitation for Sandy Lloyd, very sad, sad news for them. Finally, I just, I just want to sort of elaborate on something I touched on earlier and Alan brought up. I've mentioned this, the website. If you go to the city of Ferndale website, right on the front page, there's a button you can click, and then you can type in your address, and it will show you your tax bills for the last several years. Now, I know I've heard people say this, but I hadn't done it before. And so, when I finally did it last week, I mentioned this to a reporter and it got some publicity, but I finally did it for myself. In my personal situation, my taxes have gone down $1,000 in two years. That is not typical, and that is not everyone's situation, but I just want to encourage residents, I mean, if you want to know the facts of how a millage affects you, that's probably the best place to start. And I know I'd heard people say that, but I hadn't done it myself, but I want to encourage people to follow my example. Go to the very front page of the city of Ferndale's website, you'll see a button on there, click it, enter your address, and it'll show you that. And so, you'll see very specifically how this potential millage would impact you directly. For me, what was I opening is I realized that, you know, if I pay a couple hundred dollars more in taxes as a result of a heavily override, I'm still paying $800 less in taxes than I was two and a half years ago. That may not be true for everyone, so I want to reiterate that. But, keep that in mind, it's a great tool and it's a great device for you to get accurate information about your personal situation. And with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
$1,500 in three years.